Welcome to the Corporation of Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council, February the 5th, 2019. We'll have a moment of silence.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Patrick Adams. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of February 5th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Petitions and delegations, welcome Don. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I declare conflict interest on 6.1B, proposed strategic, or sorry, 6.1A, repeal policy purchasing agreement as two immediate members may family work for the town and are entitled to that benefit.
Duly noted. And Counselor White?
I have to declare a conflict of interest for 6IVA, parking and proposed traffic amendments, as my husband is property manager of a building on Market Street.
Thank you. Duly noted. Petition and petitions and delegations, we have Don Studholm and Kelly Black from District of Tomiscoming Social Services Administration Board. They're going to cover off the role of counsel and clarify a couple of items in that regards. Welcome, Don and Kelly.
So, you're laughing at me, yeah. It's been a few years since I've been around this table, but anyways, thank you, Mayor and Council for having us here. We really don't have a presentation or anything to provide to you, but I know that council has asked us a number of times in regards to the impact that council has in regards to sitting on Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing. You know, basically, I'll just tell you what your options are. At the end of the day, it's the Town of Kirkland Lake is going to have to make the decision whether, you know, you need to sit on Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing or not. Presently, at the moment, you know, you're following what the, their letters patent has indicated, which states that the Town of Kirkland Lake is to appoint the members to the Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing. That is a change from where it was originally set up, where you're appoint the directors to Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing. That was changed back in 2013. So, basically, what you're doing is you're following what the indications of the letters patent of Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing has. Now, Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing, of course, you are a third party to Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing, so, you know, they have asked you to do that in the past, and there has been an agreement to do that, but there's no legal requirement for you to continue to appoint your counselors to the Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing. You have no financial, you have no operational, you have no administrative impact on Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing. Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing has their own Board of Governance rules, and they also are covered under the Housing Services Act. Now, under the Housing Services Act, the District of Tomiscoming Social Services Administration Board is the service manager for housing in the District of Tomiscoming, which means that we are responsible on behalf of the province in regards to implementing the requirements under the Housing Services Act. So, it's our responsibility as a service manager to ensure that the Housing Service Act in the District of Tomiscoming, whether it's for our buildings, which we run quite a number of buildings in the district, 22, I believe, Kelly? 23, she corrected me. So, the thing is, is that, and also for our nonprofits. So, we have a number of nonprofits in the area, you know, we have Kirkland Lake nonprofit, you have New Liskert nonprofit, and you have the Halle Berry Legion nonprofit, which all operate similar nonprofits, those three agencies. So, basically, you can continue to follow the way you are doing, or because you have no responsibility at Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing, you can withdraw from appointing counselors to Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing, and it'll be Kirkland Lake's nonprofit housing responsibility to replace those three counselors with three members of the public that would sit on their board, just like at the moment, they have a number of members from the public that sit on their board presently. And because since you have no commitment to the Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing, there, you know, like I said, that's a decision you have to make because you have no commitment. So, we're open for questions or whatever, if anybody has any? Yes, Eugene?
Don, what of the other two nonprofit housing, the Legion and the New Liskert?
Well, the Legion has always been a separate independent agency, so they've never had a tie-in. The New Liskert nonprofit did have a tie-in similar to Kirkland Lake, because you have to remember that when this money became available back in the late 80s, it was the two municipalities, New Liskert and the Town of Kirkland Lake, that went out and got the money. And if you go back and you look at the documents signed back in AD7, you'll see like Joe Mavernak, Linda Ball, city signing on behalf of council in regards to that. And in fact, this building and this quarters in here was the head office for Kirkland Lake nonprofit back in 1987. So, what New Liskert has done just over the past couple, past year, year and a half, is they have broken that tie with the City of Tomiscoming Shores now, and so they'll be separating them. They've gone out and they've recruited people within their community to sit on their board. No, well, they had, it's not finalized yet, but they did have Counselor, or Counselor Mayor Kidd sitting on there, and he sat on the chair, but it's my understanding that Mayor Kidd will be removing himself as the, he already has, there you go, see, he already has.
Sorry, I'll just clarify, so they do have a representative from the City of Tomiscoming Shores. They are looking at and working on pulling away from that so that there wouldn't be council appointee, that they would be just finding their own board members. So, they only have one at the moment, and they go out and they find their own board members.
Yeah, Don and Kelly, I think it's fair to say that council still has two representatives on DSAB, which Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing falls under the umbrella of DSAB, so we do have some input as a board member on nonprofit housing, but certainly, I don't think there's a need for us to sit on the board at Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing. When we turned over the assets to DSAB, I think we gave up a certain amount of our rights, and you're correct when you say you appoint the members, or council can request to be appointed members on the board, but it's nonprofit housing that actually okay's being a director. So, I don't think there's a role for us there. I think we covered under DSAB, which in my opinion is sufficient.
Yes, well, you know, we do, under the Housing Services Act, as a service manager, have the responsibility of reviewing, you know, Kirkland Lake nonprofit, making sure they follow the Housing Services Act. We do review their budget every year. We provide them a subsidy of tax dollars every year to ensure that they do maintain a nonprofit status, because they don't meet all their spending requirements out of their revenue. We do the same with the other two nonprofits in our area, so, yes, and by, you know, sitting on the board, you and Patrick over there, you know, you do have, you know, some input into that, as long as the other two nonprofits also.
I think it's also safe to say, Don and Kelly, that the reserve fund that is with Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing stays with them, is that, is that a fair comment?
Oh, yes, that's, yes, that's their reserve fund. Of course, you know, we do review that, and we're supposed to have some input into regards to the use of that reserve fund, but that is their reserve fund that they have built up over the years, correct?
Any other comments or questions?
Well, you know where we are, so if you have any more questions, you can give us a call or send us an email, and we'll answer them as quickly as we can.
Okay. Thanks for coming out and presenting those options and clarifying the role of counsel. And congratulations on your upcoming retirement. Thank you. We have a resolution. Maybe we'll read the resolution and if there's any further discussion.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, it's seconded by Counselor, or sorry, Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White. The council directs a bylaw be brought forward for consideration to remove the Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing as a committee of council.
Any further comments, questions? All in favor? Acceptance of the minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council accept the minutes of the regular meeting of council held January 29th, 2019.
All in favor? Reports of municipal officers and communications, CAO?
The first item concerns the purchasing agreement that we had in place for employees to purchase computers. Program came forth in 2008, and at that time, basically, yes, you were buying computers. It has since evolved. Much, many more of the requests now are focusing on tablets, watches, Xboxes, whatever, and that wasn't really the intent of the program when it was first established. It was really seen as a way to help employees with their kids when they're, you know, preparing them for the tools they need in school and such. It is a popular program. It has been well subscribed, although that has been going down somewhat recently. But from administration's point of view, it's one more facet that we have to look at, and we have to treat as we do with everything else. Where is the fiscal responsibility for this? The optics are that the taxpayer is underwriting the cost of an employee purchase. I don't believe that that's particularly applicable in our time and considering the financial situation that the municipality finds itself in. I'm bringing it forward that we disband this particular program. If it does come forward in the future, and there could be different ways that it could be manifested, but right now, I think that it'd be more appropriate to terminate the program.
I think one of the other things, Wolf, is that the price of these products have gone down considerably, and there's often in-house financing, and some of it 0% financing, so we're not in the business of the computer business. It's been good for staff in the past, but I think that the optics have changed, as you said. I support what you're saying. Any further comments, discussion?
It's moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council repeal the purchasing agreement, computer and associated peripherals as recommended by the chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Unanimous. Wolf?
Yeah, I just want to wait till it comes up on the screen. The second item is a strategic review for the corporation. In January, direction was given that this should be undertaken. It comes from a lot of different sources. Primarily, we do know that the corporation as it stands was put in place roughly 20 years ago, a little bit more, and it was then put together as a corporation that would be meeting the needs of a shrinking community and one where economic activity was also constricting. That obviously has changed. We have $325 million investment at our driveway coming into town, and they're anticipating 425 employees. So, the demand on our services, the kinds of services, the number of people, and how, what their anticipations are, that's all changing. At the same time, we have significant legislative and regulatory changes that are making it more burdensome, or more, let's say, administrative burden for the corporation to provide the services that it does. And add to that, you also have a very different social climate than you did in 1999, 2000. Now, everybody's on Facebook, everybody has different expectations of service and response and transparency. We're kind of lumbering along like a bit of a dinosaur here. We have other inputs from within the corporation as well. Forty percent of our working population can retire within three years. We've had fairly significant turnover and turmoil for the last 18 months. We have been able to keep doing what we are doing, but we do find that there's a confusion now. People are taking on many more roles, responsibilities, and functions in addition to their existing job descriptions, that it's not a very efficient way to go about it. We could look at this and take it from within and say, okay, to council, this is what we think that has to be done, and I'm sure that you'll give us your blessing and your support. Problem is, we're also bringing into the conversation our own biases, our own perspectives, and the fact that, especially now with budget time, we honestly do not have the time to commit to this that it does deserve. Think that an objective third party would be able to do this better, a party that could bring to the table a mix of different skill sets, one in organizational development, in human resources development, and management training, as well as municipal operations. So, why not try to do that and bring it forward? What would we get out of this? I would think that we're, we will have a better capacity to manage change in the future. We, I'm sure, will be able to provide better customer service going into the future. We would have far better employee satisfaction, morale, and opportunity to recruit if we're working under stricter and more clear guidelines. And hopefully, we would have an organization that in and of itself comes up with more creative ideas and is able to engage a community in the way that, well, people expect to be engaged in 2019. The process itself, I think, would take four to six months. If so, it would allow us to go through the research process, bring forward recommendations to council, plus an implementation, plus a costing plan, and begin to do the rollout so that the actual stuff begins to, will coincide with the 2020 budgeting process, so there's no disconnect or shock to the system. We will have to obviously take ownership of whatever is given to us. There will be some things that we can do right away, there will be some things that we can't. There will be some things that, well, you need the money somewhere else, and some things that we're going to have to adjust to what we know is better. That's an open conversation with council. So, based on what the direction it was given at the beginning of the year, I'm bringing it forward. I have prepared an RFP. I am asking if council does continue to support this approach, and if so, then I would like to release the RFP. RFP would be going out in a very targeted manner to associations, organizations that do this work. It would not be, no offense, Brad, but advertising the Northern News, the capacity isn't there. If the results come back and the costs are more than what we're willing to bear, we rethink it and redo it. It comes back to council, though, no decisions are made without council's approval. And I think I should stop there.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea. I don't normally like spending taxpayers' monies on consultants, but I have seen within the town departments where some people are taking on responsibilities that really should be other people's responsibilities, and the other thing too, it's my understanding that the KPMG report was more an accounting slant of a report, and what we're asking for now is more of a hands-on, day-to-day, operational review. And I have one question for Wolf. Will council members also be asked their opinions on the day-to-day operations during this process? I believe I read that in your, but I just, I'd like to get clarification. Thank you.
If I may, the, first off, yes, council will be involved. There are three key parties to this: the staff, council, and the managers. The process itself has to be very, very consultative. Council, and if I were doing this, I would start by approaching council and saying, okay, so this is what your corporation does. What do you think it should be doing? What do you think could be doing better, could be doing worse? And then taking it from there down the stream and saying, okay, this is how it works now, and here's some ideas for how it could be better. It is an internal operation. It reflects the organization and will be reflected in the organization, if organizational change, structural change, realotment or reassignment of staff, it will be new reporting requirements, better definition of rules and responsibilities. If and when we get through this, I would be recommending to council that, okay, now you have your new structure, you have your priorities, now you should be taking it to the public and saying, as a corporation, what do you want us to accomplish as well? Because now we have that capacity to deal with that. If we were to take that on right now, what you would call a traditional corporate strategic plan, I even could be telling me all kinds of things, and I'd have to look at him and say, I just can't do it. So, yes, we'll be coming over to very much a consultative process, council involved. KPMG report, yes. KPMG effectively took six communities and said, this is how you compare. They didn't go into depth. They did make, one of the key points was, and I can't find it right away, but you do have some inefficiencies here that you need to address. Inefficiencies being within process as well as structure. I'll give you an example. We had an argument last year, and I was told, look at, and this was based on old information, look at Elliott Lake. They have the same kind of tax base coming in, they have the same kind of structure, and they cost $45 an employee per hour to work. Look at Kirkland Lake, $65. Well, okay, you put your tail between your legs and you run for the door, but turn around and ask the question, what is that person doing for 65 bucks an hour? Because I can tell you, that person is doing two or three jobs, whereas the one in Elliott Lake comes in at eight, goes home at five. That's it. On a regular council day, the emails start at 5:30 in the morning, and they're banging back and forth, and we carry it on till about 10:00. Why? Because that person's doing planning, doing infrastructure, doing this, doing that. So, KPMG, even though they did a really nice comparison against six municipalities, they didn't get into the heart and soul of this place. And I don't, it was a good report, but it basically, if you want to take, what was your take-home from the KPMG report? You've got to be looking at this a little bit more.
I agree, Wolf. I think that's a fair comment about KPMG. Very statistical. Did it provide a lot of solutions? Not necessarily. And I think we need that outside set of eyes to look at the whole operation, look at our corporate structure, and put solutions in place that we haven't been able to look at. And we need an independent review. Trying to do it ourselves, it won't be done in four months, first of all, doing it ourselves, and it'll be a struggle to get it done in a year. So, I have, I'm not big on consultant reports, but this is one particular one that we really need to get the answers and solutions and make it work. We've got a lot of opportunities going forward with the Cale Gold Expansion and potentially out in Dolby as well, and the surrounding mines, and I do think we are going to see a population increase instead of a decrease that we've seen in the past, and we've got old infrastructure, and we've got a lot of issues to deal with, and hopefully, this is going to help us move forward. So, I support this, Wolf. Any other counselor comments? Patrick?
Yeah, I am in full support of this as well. With ups and downs of the industry, that's financing town pretty much, so just making sure that we have all, everybody working, things go up and down. So, when we have these uptimes, it's not about trying to spend more. This is the opportunity to try and spend less, in a sense, so that when the down cycle does happen, we're able to cruise through that until the next up cycle happens. For the KPMG report, I'm in full support of it. They identified duplication of efforts in many aspects and key themes such as policies, people reporting to other people with the same information, duplication of efforts in multiple points they pointed out, establishing formal communications policies, we don't have that well, and the elimination of duplication of efforts, identifying a connection with the town's invoicing processes. So, we do have a lot of duplications, and certainly, as you said, a lot of people doing multiple jobs, so I'm all for figuring this out and moving ahead.
And if I may, it doesn't preclude the corporation or our staff already taking some It's been an interesting couple of months, because we already see some areas where we have to bring forward to her council's consideration, some very fundamental rules of engagement, whether we're working in finance, in human resources, in policy development, and that will be coming up as we go along. At the same time, we're asking the staff to tell us what other efficiencies and processes, et cetera, that you think should be looked at. If you're not comfortable saying it to the consultants, write it down, give it to me. We'll get it back into the system. Not everything gets done right away, obviously, maybe not everything gets done, but we need to know what it is. I think I put it in there. Everybody has a say, every say is heard. We do what's good for the corporation, though. So, yeah, we'll be working with that.
It doesn't preclude us from not using some of the suggestions that KPMG did come up with. They did have some good suggestions, and I think it kind of just died in the water. We didn't get, we didn't get it done. So, we can take that, but that, we don't want that, the overwhelming influence of this study that we need to get done, so, but we'll certainly review that as well. Any other comments? Other direction?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Adams. The council approves the chief administrative officer proceed with the Strategic Operational Review RFP as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous? Unanimous? Presentation of 2018 operating and capital discussion. Treasurer, Sherri Matthews. Sherri, before you start, I'd just like to make a few comments. This is giving us a good snapshot of where we are for 2018, because we haven't had an update for quite some time. So, first of all, thank you for getting things brought up to date and give us a clearer picture of where we're at. The report doesn't, does show some variances, and I think before we get all hung up on that, one of the things that isn't included in those variances, the fact that there's about 1.7 million in reserve and reserve funds that will be transferred over to offset some of those particular areas. However, I got to caution council that there are still some payables to come in and possibly additional revenues, grant money not yet received. So, these, this update is not etched in stone. It will change, I believe it's a couple, two more weeks roughly, that before we do the final cutoff for any invoices or incoming revenues for 2018. Is that correct? Oh, okay. So, once we have that done, hopefully then on February 12th, we'll be able to give a more in-depth, more close, closer to the final. While the auditors, okay, fair enough. Okay, go ahead.
Sherri, excuse me, do you have your, is your microphone? There we go. Okay, sorry.
Okay, take it away.
Okay, so, so we have the two documents. One is for the operating and one is for the capital. As Mayor Kylie pointed out, I really want to stress, these are drafts, they're just snapshots in time. I recognize council has not seen anything since, I believe that it was the second quarter, June 30th update, so I recognize everybody wants to see something. But normally, a fourth quarter, you wouldn't see it. You would get your audited financial statements when everything's done. So, this is premature, but it at least tells you what it was. It's based on when I printed something on January 31st for the year-end 18th, that's what this is based on. And as Mayor Kylie pointed out, so, we rely on other parties to give us information related to the year-end. You've got the payables, so we rely on vendors to submit them to us, and then we also have receivables, which funding agencies, sometimes we have to go back and forth with them to understand, you know, some grants you get, you don't have to pay back, some you do. Which there again, it goes back to, you only have to pay back if you don't spend it, and if we're missing an invoice, we don't know how much we're going to have to get back. So, like I say, there's a lot of factors, and, and there's estimates. We talked about estimates at the last meeting for the auditors. Say for the allowance for doubtful taxes, we have to discuss that with them, because they'll have to sign off before we can figure out if the allowance that we, we think is sufficient is sufficient with them. So, I just really want to be clear that this is a snapshot, and, and go from there. Okay? As far as the, oh, and I also wanted to mention, sorry, this is, we've done it in this format, because this was the format that the 2018 budget was presented in. One, it's not a PSAB format. And then when I say PSAB format, your audited financial statements are in accordance with PSAB. These aren't, for several reasons which can happen, we can explain that another day. But, so, as far as this format, I'll be quite honest, it's not my favorite format. And Peter and I are actually working on a, a format that we're hoping will be more meaningful and, and help council to make better decisions. We're working on it. It wasn't ready for this one, so we've gone with the old format. But we also want suggestions and input from council on that new format as to what everybody wants. Now, obviously, there's seven opinions, but we'll try and come up with a consensus and have something better. And we also want to do that at the department level as well, to provide it better info for, information for them as well, because everybody has different ways, you know. Some places like to look at revenues and expenses together for a program, other places it doesn't matter. So, that's something we're kind of working on.
That's welcoming news, because I can say from past experience, I don't like the reporting system either. And with all new counselors, I think we need a more simplified approach and make it more understandable. So, I'm very happy to hear this.
I just wanted to interject. Simplified doesn't mean that you only get four or five lines. It means how we explain it to you. And as Sherri said, we're looking for feedback. What is it when we bring you something that doesn't make sense or is not easily sensible? You have to let us know. Then we can adjust what information we bring forward on that basis.
Yeah, it'll be a work in progress. I mean, so as far as the, the document that looks at the operating, the waterworks and the wastewater, it is an actual versus budget, there are variances in there. As we mentioned, we're going to be discussing this on the February 12th meeting at a more in-depth level, but for now, I just wanted to run through it. As far as the revenues that are at the top of the page, they're at the top of the page mainly because they're ones that we don't allocate to a specific department. So, you're looking at your, your overall taxation, the, the OMPF grant, anything like that. We don't allocate them to a specific department, so they're at the top. And then the rest of it, it's broken down by, my understanding is those cost centers were set somewhere in the past.
The departments and administration in the past, you try to identify, instead of every different little line item, what are the major activities or programs or services that you're running? And you tie your costs and your, well, your expenses, revenues to that. So, that's why they're up there. It's not arbitrary, it's just that those are the, the major cost centers. For a report like this, you don't go deeper into detail. That'll happen on the 12th.
Okay. And so each one of these is presented on a net basis. So, you know, just for an example, if we take, say garbage collection, there would be user fees involved in that. Well, so the, the user fee revenue and the expenses is just a net amount. Okay? So, like I say, for ease of whatever, for this particular instance, that's the way we've presented it, is just net. You will see the water and wastewater on page two, they're broken out separately, just because there are actual separate approved budgets for those. And then if you do go to page two, you'll see the line that says, net revenues excluding the transfers. And that's what Mayor Kylie, I think, was, was mentioning. So, as far as the net revenues, the actual to-date was 1.6. But for budgeting purposes, council budgets transfers to and from, there's reserves, reserve funds, and actually, you could add capital as well. So, it's the 1.6 where the net transfers to and from, which there again, like I say, it's, it's part of the budget process, but when you see a PSAB statement, you won't see that. So, that's why I've broken it out separately, as opposed to just netting those two amounts.
That's going to come much more clear as we go into the process, where Sherri has to refer back to this and make explanations. So, when you see it here, it, it doesn't jump out at you and make, ta-da, here's good sense. And, I'm sorry, but when she speaks accountant, it's difficult to understand, too. But trust me, for me, it was a learning curve, too, but she walked me through it. You will see where that comes into play and how it affects your bottom line then. She'll, she'll take you through that.
Just to clarify, the OMPF provincial funding grant, we don't have that amount yet. There's been a delay from the province. And I see in the paper in North Bay, they, they're well into their budget process, and what they did, and I'd say it's a bit of a crapshoot, but they reduced their, their grant money by 500,000. But we really don't know one way or the other, so it's, it makes it a little bit difficult going forward if we don't get that, those numbers soon. So, hopefully, we're going to have that to move forward soon.
So, as I say, February 12th will be the time that we discuss this in more in-depth. So, for right now, I'm just going to leave that one. And if we look at the capital one, I guess overall, my, my understanding is that the capital budget, actually, both budgets were passed later than normal. So, a lot of the projects did not get started on time, which meant they didn't get finished by year-end, which would have been the preference. So, I just wanted to mention, so, for the projects that weren't completed by year-end, there was a resolution that council had on the last meeting in December, which basically, any unspent portion of the 2018 capital projects has been directed to a reserve for infrastructure capital. And that way, we've ensured that the dollars are available to fund the completion in 19. So, they're not lost, it's just whatever wasn't spent, we assume the project will be finished in 19, and the dollars will be transferred out of that reserve at that time in 19. And so that's, like I say, overall for today, February 12th for more in-depth discussion.
Thank you, Sherri. I can sleep a little better at night. Having to wait since last June to find out where we were was, it was troublesome and worrisome. But I know you've gone through basically everything from start to almost finished.
In progress.
And we appreciate the efforts, and thank you for bringing us up to date. Thank you. Yeah, Wolf?
One of the important aspects of the budget process is to make sure that the public is aware of what's going on and has their feedback. Obviously, these kind of meetings are the best, right? Because people do have a chance to come forward. But as we get into the process itself, one of the things that we want to do is set up a website that tracks the, the documents as they are being presented to council. And that's, again, you go back to Sherri's point, that it's a snapshot in time. Each one will be updated, there'll be note, notes put with it, as well, the key financial documentation that the municipality works with, the FIRs and performance and that, they will also be linked there. Any questions as we get them from council? So, if you could put them in email, we will post both the questions and the answers on the website as well. We will also be soliciting feedback from the public, and it will come in and, and will be directed to council's attention as well. So, you can see where there'll be an overlap in that. Where we can also put through some FAQs, like what does a deferred revenue mean, and what's the difference between a reserve and reserve fund? We'll have that on the website as well. So, that's, we're just getting that going now, but that will be coming up.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, Wolf, for people that aren't on the computer, will that information also be available from Town Hall in hard copy?
Yes, the majority of the information will be. Obviously, I'm not going to take some of the background documentation like the FIRs, but questions and answers, they'll always be at the Town Hall as well.
Thanks, Sherri.
It's moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council accepts the presentation of the draft, 2018 operating capital budgets as presented by the treasurer.
All in favor? Unanimous? Cassandra DeJardin? Okay. Okay. I didn't realize you were going to. You can say. You're okay.
So Cassandra's back today, and we put her back on the agenda. Cassandra came two meetings ago, I believe, asking to have an exemption from the animal control bylaw. Her intent is to ask you to please allow her to have a micro pig as her pet. Her presentation she, she gave to you. There were a few questions that, that we asked her to go back and, and give us some answers to. One of them had to do with veterinarian. So, she has supplied a letter where her veterinarian will be the Tamis Communion Vet Center down in New Riscard. And then we did also ask about what would happen if, if the pig got boos and Cassandra was not available. So, she has supplied us with the name of the list and telephone numbers of people that can be called in the event. We also discussed long-term plans. If something happened and she were to get sick or not available or not in town for a while, what was her plan for that? So, Cassandra has given us all that information, and we forward it to, and Cassandra's here in case you have any other questions.
Any council comments, questions?
Casey, how, how big will your pig get?
Sorry, forgot to turn on the mic. It only get up to approximately maximum 17 inches, which is approximately medium height of a dog. And the maximum weight they can get up to is approximately 150 pounds. That's the maximum. The minimum for a mini pig to get is 60 pounds.
And where do you keep your pig?
I would want to keep it inside the house, because I mean, mine is 50 here in the snow we've been getting. I wouldn't, don't think I would want it outside. It would be in my house. But if I want to, like, take it out for a walk or put it out in the yard, I would like to have that access. But preferably, I would like to keep my pig inside and be able to cuddle with it, just like a dog as well.
Counselor Adams?
Yep, I'm in full support of you getting your pig. Anyone that goes through this much effort to get an animal is quite extraordinary and good, good on you.
Thank you.
Counselor White?
So, just to let you know, when it was first brought, I was a hard no. I was an absolute, we're opening the doors, there's no way. You came to us and you were so prepared. And then when we challenged you and asked you questions, you came back with amazing answers. And I am in full support, and I hope at the end, when we vote, that you and your pig will be very happy, hopefully.
Counselor Owen?
Well, I never thought I would ever vote in agreement with having a pig live in Kirkland Lake. But I must admit, you are very impressive with your background, with your knowledge. Every question, every concern we've had, you've answered in writing without hesitation. There is no doubt in my mind, although I would not want to have a pig, I just want to make that clear.
Sure enough.
I, I, but that's fine. There's no doubt in my mind that you will look after the pig the proper way, that you will, you know, there's a lot of dog owners in town, I'd like to wring their necks, but, you know, there's a lot of good dog owners. So, I'm sure you'll be a good pig owner. The fact that your neighbors have written letters of support, I think is also very important, because that's usually where problems can start. And like I say, I never thought I'd vote for a pig in town, but because this is a one-time exception, it's not a change to the bylaw, hey, go get your pig.
Thank you, Counselor Owens.
Cassandra, I echo Counselor White's comments. You did come prepared. You've done your homework. I think I mentioned that one of your presentations that when we lived in North Bay, our neighbor was a vet, and he had one, and there wasn't an issue, there was never a problem. So, if you follow the rules, like you said, I fully support this. On an exception basis, as Counselor Owen said, we're not changing the bylaw. So, any further comments?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Adams. The council directs the bylaw be brought forward for consideration, approving Mr. Jardin's request for an exemption to the animal control bylaw, allowing for a micro pig within a residential zone of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Unanimous?
I'll draft up this bylaw and bring it back to the next.
Proposed, proposed parking, traffic and parking amendments? Ashley Billado?
All right.
That was the girl, not the pig.
That's what happens when you let pigs into town.
All right. I don't know if this is going to be as exciting, but we'll see. Uh, yeah, let's, let's hope not. I'm a little nervous. Um, okay, so modifications to a few areas in town for the, uh, with regards to the parking bylaw. So there's four things to, uh, discuss, uh, in regards to this report to council. Uh, sorry, I'm in the wrong spot. We are looking at, uh, these are, these are actually suggestions that have come up since, um, probably the beginning of last fall. And we've sort of piled them all together into one report, um, just based on the fact that we had, we were in a lame duck period for council and so on and so forth. So looking at four different things, this is not normal. Usually, we would do them individually as they come up. So looking at prohibiting heavy trucks on Main Street and end in residential areas. Looking at introducing one-sided parking on Government Road during the winter months. Uh, removing two parking spaces on the south side of Second Street between Churchill and Prospect. And, uh, as requested by council, to look at rescinding bylaw eighteen zero eight six and eighteen one oh nine, which was the bylaws put in place to introduce a loading zone on Market Street and turn Market Street into a one-way. So all four being considered tonight. Um, we'll start with them individually, kind of run through each one. So it's, uh, no surprise that heavy trucks that are on residential street obviously pose a bit more of a, um, a burden on the pavement itself. Uh, there's different ways to quantify those effects. You can either look at the impacts by calculating additional material that you need at the start of a project to accommodate heavy vehicles. Or you can look at the degradation of the actual pavement performance by having heavy vehicles be on streets that are not set up for it. There's no real way to say exactly what those impacts are, but they are well-known that they do cause problems to our roads. So Main Street, we've recently constructed this last year, and we used a design to accommodate passenger vehicles similar to our residential streets. So it's been brought up, um, time and time again over the last few months, that in order to protect our assets, we've requested that heavy vehicles be prohibited from using Main Street. Uh, there are circumstances that would allow you to be able to have a heavy vehicle on residential streets. And typical exemptions that we found in other municipalities where, uh, the operation of heavy truck, when, where necessary to deliver and receive goods, so a place like Pronto, obviously, we don't want to discourage, uh, heavy trucks from being able to access them, so making sure they have, um, an ability to do that. Uh, any heavy vehicles that would provide a contracted services, uh, for a limited time duration as well. Uh, emergency vehicles, our town trucks, public utilities, and contractors that are engaged in repair, maintenance, and construction of our streets, or utilities throughout the town. Uh, the operations of trucks upon an official established detour, uh, operations of garbage and recycling trucks, paving trucks, and, uh, operators of trucks that resides on residential streets. We have some home-based businesses in town that use heavy machinery in residential areas. We also don't want to inhibit them from being able to access their, their home. So that was, um, I'm not sure whether you want me to address each one individually, or would you like me, yes, okay, that's probably there. So what I said was if council was favorable to see this recommendation move forward, I dropped a bylaw and have it considered for the next meeting.
One question, Ashley. Did we do any consultation with, uh, there is a trucking, a couple of trucking firms down on the end of Main Street?
No, I've not talked to them.
It is definitely an issue, and we've heard that, uh, loud and clear from people on Main and Wood Street. And we spent a lot of money getting Main Street in, in top-notch shape. And, uh, these heavy vehicles are going to rip it up, uh, if we continue in the same manner. So, uh, I support what, uh, what you're recommending. Any further comments from council? Counselor Owen?
Through your, through the, your worship to Ashley, um, in the vehicle exemptions, uh, flatbed tow truck, is that considered a heavy vehicle?
I would say so, yes.
And so is that also in the exemptions?
We can make sure that it is, yes.
Okay. Um, I think there's another issue too about having, uh, large transports in a residential area. I, I don't think that's, uh, particularly good for safety. Most of, we have Archer Drive. And for the most part, the heavy trucks that are going down, as far as I understand, that are going down the street are going, um, to Service Industries on Archer Drive, so it's just faster for them or shorter or whatever. But, uh, I would rather see that traffic directed to Archer Drive, which is an industrial area, out of the residential area. And, uh, like has been stated, we just spent a lot of money rebuilding that street. And, uh, we can't afford to, uh, to allow it to crumble away again, so that's how I feel.
Thank you. Counselor Ivanoff?
I also agree. We should, uh, limit traffic on Main Street for a couple of reasons, and safety's, safety is a main issue. Uh, it's a very hilly street to start with, and traffic does get caught up on that hill on Main Street. Uh, the only exemption I would ask for is maybe, uh, Santa Claus parade when you have all the boat trucks on there, so aside from that.
Thank you. Counselor Owens?
Uh, I remember one of the last, or a meeting a while ago, there was, when this discussion came up, there was something about a sign that used to be there. Did something ever come of this? Is there something somewhere that already stops trucks from going by there?
We looked into it, and that's why we brought it to council, because there was the thought that this had already come and was discussed, and the signs were placed up, but there has not been a sign there for a very long time. We went back to the Google Maps to see whether or not at least we could find it in two thousand eleven, and they don't exist. So it would have been a while back. We can't find any bylaws that would prohibit any type of heavy vehicles on residential streets or on Main Street specifically, so we did do our research.
And one more question. Uh, a school bus, 'cause I know there's an operator that parks down there, would that be include, like, is that considered?
We'll put it-
Like, I, just out of curiosity, I know the park buses there, so.
I'll take a look at it, and we can add it as the list of, uh, exemptions.
No further comments?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Adams. The council directs the bylaw be brought back for consideration to prohibit heavy trucks on Main Street and in residential areas unless necessary to deliver items. And other exemptions? Shall I put "and other exemptions"?
Perhaps that can go right in the bylaw itself. All in favor? unanimous?
So the next two areas that we wanted to discuss with council, we actually circulated on social media, so, and this is my feedback that I received, which was great. We got lots and lots and lots of comments, uh, back, mostly, most of them were, were in support. Uh, so the first one we'll look at is the one-sided parking on Government Road during winter months. This is something that, um, from a public work standpoint, uh, they've brought it up a few times, um, when it comes to heavy vehicles trying to get through on Government Road. When that snow starts to pile up, it really gets narrow, and we have ran into issues where trucks have gotten stuck in that area. Uh, we understand that probably from a business standpoint, the last thing that they want us to do is to reduce the amount of parking that is available to them. So we looked at where the, the major issue lies, and that's right at that brick, or the concrete wall across some RBC and subway. So what we thought about doing as part of the recommendation to council in order to work on getting that street a little bit wider was to eliminate parking just from thirty-one to- where there is picture walls, so the fences with the pictures on it. So there's no, I specifically chose an area where there was no businesses right directly in front of it, so there's nobody being directly affected. Um, it was just a suggestion, uh, the comments received from the public. They looked at, uh, the possibility of just increasing our budgets for winter operations so that we could do it more regularly, similar to Liskerd. Uh, that will, that would hit you pretty hard, I think. And it's probably something that should be looked at when we talk about two thousand and eighteen budget deliberations, rather than focusing on that right now. Uh, we looked, a lot of, there's actually a lot of people that said to eliminate the parking on one side of the street, maybe flip it on a monthly basis or weekly basis to, um, give it, uh, each business owners on either side of the street the ability to have parking directly in front of their stores. Um, and then their other thought was to eliminate parking on the south side of the street for the entire year, not just during winter, because it is a concern for the narrowness of it when people park. So those were the options that were thrown around. Um, we did talk to the chamber, so I did circulate a letter directly to the chamber and received some comments back from them as well. Generally, the same sort of things came back, so questions?
Counselor Woods?
I'm going to throw this out there. Uh, maybe this is the perfect opportunity to start discussing this, is a lot of places in province, in the province, people are towns or municipalities are redesigning their main arteries or streets to include bike lanes.
Mm-hmm.
So reconfigure commercial arteries where you can maybe eliminate parking on one side, include a bike lane, which could be used maybe in winter for snowmobile access or stuff like to our downtown core. And just, this might be the, the perfect time to do this, so, throwing it out there.
Mm-hmm. So that, I think that was discussed during our trail report at one point.
I don't know if it was government road, Phil Body would know better, but I think it went around, Bonnie's not here?
No, I was going to say, like she did.
This is my finger talking.
Okay.
The, the pass went around, and when you look at Queen Street, that was, remember, we were looking at that one to take people around there.
We did get, uh, comments back from the Tamiscomin Health Unit on this one as well, so they saw our, um, our requests for comments, and they did suggest the same thing, that it was going to encourage residents to walk and cycle more through the downtown. And speaking to a couple of the people that work at Tamiscomin Health Unit, that was the first thing that came to their mind when they said, okay, if we eliminate one, uh, lane of parking on Government Road, you could throw a bike lane down there, which is significantly less, or more, it can be less wide than parking is. So it, it could be accommodated, and it could be something that you could shut it down in the winter as well, if there's not going to be biking during the winter, and then open it back up again too.
Yeah, yeah, and you can use it for something else in the winter, and as a cyclist that I have cycled down Government Road, it is scary being that close to the vehicles, like a door opening or, I don't know, people are really close to you.
Counselor White?
I'd definitely be in support of removing, um, quite a large section of parking on that side, considering, um, it is mostly railing. It's already kind of closed off to access, except at points where the stairs are. Um, so already, kind of, the access is restricted all along that side of government. So as far as I can see, there's better access on the, on the opposite side. Maybe we should look into taking away more, uh, parking spots on that side.
Counselor Owen?
Um, I, I definitely would want a longer section than just where those signs are. Um, and I have no problem with taking parking off that complete side of the street. My experience going downtown is that, uh, if I want to find a parking spot, that's the side of the street to park on. So I, I think we have more than enough parking, and you know what? There's a big parking lot, uh, just off Water Lane that people don't use. And maybe this would encourage people to actually use that, uh, that, uh, parking lot as well. There's more than enough parking downtown, and, uh, I, I think in terms of safety, it would be a, a big improvement. Um, I did, uh, see one accident downtown. Yes, it was driver error, but nonetheless, it had to do with the width of, uh, of Government Road. Um, so I, I think it, you know, winter or summer would make it safer. Now, in terms of a bike path, that's a great idea, but wouldn't you only be able to ride the one-way? Like, no? Well, what happens when two bikes come together and that, if it's-
No, the way the designs in these municipalities, they're wide enough that you have two-way traffic. Like, if you take a right through one in the summer, you see they're all, they're popping up all over. Sudbury's got them all over. They're, they're inside the marked lanes and there's traffic going both ways, and like, a bike's only this wide, right?
Well-
You don't, I, I mean, the lane's only this wide for the bikes, so you can have easy access to two lanes of traffic on that one for bikes.
I just bought a bike recently, and I hope we don't meet on, on Government Road, 'cause, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a senior now. I might have a little wobble to me there. But no, I, I like, I, I like the idea of accommodating more, more activity downtown, if, if, if the space is there. Um, and I'm no expert on how much space a bike takes, obviously, but, uh, yeah, I would like to see that whole block, um, as no parking, especially in the wintertime. I, I'm sure some merchants will voice concern, and we have to remain open to their concerns, because it's not easy to run a small business now. You're competing against the internet, you're competing against the big box stores, and we certainly don't want to discourage any businesses. So hopefully, we'll get some feedback, and, uh, and when we have all the information, can make a better decision.
So Ashley, oop, sorry, go ahead, Counselor-
The, the, uh, the issue I see with bike lanes, and I've been to Toronto, where they have them, somebody making a right-hand turn and a bike coming down that right-hand side, and they're turning into the bike lane, and they don't see the bikes. That's, and I see that happen in Toronto all the time. It's a scary situation. I don't know if you want to have one block of bike lane. Uh, I'm, I'm sure you're better off doing it elsewhere, uh, than on Government Road.
I have some concerns as well, because when this town was built, the streets are, are fairly narrow compared to other, uh, communities, so, um, I, I'm a little worried about the safety issue. It certainly, uh, it's a lot more attractive and, and, uh, a lot more activity downtown, but it is a concern. Ashley, uh, you had, oop, sorry, Counselor-
Good, all good. Uh, I would be in support of the, uh, one side being eliminated. Uh, talking about local merchants, we did go out and talk to the Economic Committee, well, group, and, uh, ten of the eleven comments were favorable as to removing. And even, some of them even suggested in the whole, uh, removal of the one side to allow for the better flow of traffic. Uh, in terms of biking on the road, uh, the law does require us to provide one meter of clearance around a bicycle. So with parking being there, that one meter clearance gets that person there, and then how's that person supposed to go around? So, uh, bike lane is certainly, uh, a subject, but in the meantime, if we eliminate that side, that would, uh, help drivers be more accommodating to the drivers, uh, cyclists on the road, which we are required to provide one meter clearance around when we go to pass.
Counselor Perry?
Uh, I'm, I agree with, agreement with this too. The only thing I don't agree with is the flip-flopping back and forth of the lanes, 'cause I think that could be very confusing, 'cause we're seeing that now with the, the one-way street. So I think that would not be a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, of those three recommendations you had, which, uh, one was your recommend, recommending?
Well, I know from a staff perspective, we were hoping to be able to eliminate parking along that whole block. It was the idea that we were trying to be understanding to the businesses that were on that north side of the street, 'cause it did, a couple of them did raise concerns, so.
I, I support that as well. Counselor Owens?
Who's going to enforce it? Like, that's a million-dollar question. If we pass this now, like, how do we enforce? Is it OPP? Is it, OPP can do this? Okay.
It'll be a matter of changing some signage as well, right, to be sure that we're saying it's no parking on either side.
Well, we would have signs up there too, no parking-
Yep.
From November fifteenth till April fifteenth, or whatever the case may be.
It's moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council directs the traffic and parking bylaw be amended to eliminate parking spaces on the south side of Government Road from thirty-one to forty-one Government Road West during winter months, as presented by the town planner. So this just gets you through this, this, this winter. This does not hold you into anything else. We can further have discussions on, on what you'd like to do with that south side, but this just a square of the narrowness of the winter time, right?
Is it only for those addresses that?
And do you want the whole, you tell me what you would like this, how would you like it amended?
The way it was recommended was the thirty-one to forty-one Government Road, yeah.
Yes, that's what this-
Yeah.
In the actual bylaw, can we have the dates specific?
I think what Joanne's doing is a resolution just for this winter, and then we could further do a bylaw after that, or is it for?
This is to bring back the Traffic and Parking Bylaw.
Okay.
For, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Uh, Counselor Owen?
Okay, I'm a little confused right now. Not unusual, but. Are we voting, we're only voting for a short block, and I get the feeling the consensus around the table was for the whole block. That resolution's just for a portion of the block, and then you further confuse me by, the resolution is, is only to bring the, the parking bylaw back to be amended. So if, if I vote in favor of that, even though I wanted the full block, when the parking bylaw comes back, then can the parking bylaw be amended to include the full block?
This is giving direction to the Town Planner to bring back a bylaw, you don't have to, you can vote yes for this and no for the bylaw, that, that's your, your prerogative.
Or?
However, if you want her to write now, and, and you can, the consensus is that you want, you'd like Ashley to bring back a, a bylaw that states that that whole block is no parking on the south side?
Then?
Then we can, we can amend this, and that's what she will.
Okay, okay, I think the mayor should just take a straw vote, and if that's what the consensus is, then I think we should change it. Thank you.
I'm in favor of that.
So this is the full block, which will be from?
This is the full block, or, can you?
LaBelle to Duncan or Prospect?
Prospect?
Yeah.
From LaBelle to Prospect then. Yeah, that's a lot clearer.
Okay, so it, it reads that council directs the Traffic and Parking Bylaw be amended to eliminate parking spaces on the south side of Government Road from LaBelle to Prospect during winter months, as presented by the Town Planner.
All in favor? unanimous?
Okay. The third topic, or the third thing that I wanted to bring to council was the removal of parking spaces on the south side of Second Street. Uh, this was, again, circulated on social media to try and get some feedback, I did circulate to the business owner, that's, that would be directly affected by the removal of parking spaces as well, to get her comments, and I think those are, have been circulated to you. Uh, so the taxi companies are originally the ones that raised concerns with the on-street parking on Second Street, noting a difficulty when on Churchill and attempting to turn west onto Second. I have two children, I know it's a really challenging intersection to try and get through. So the, um, residents have called also to express concern related to the safety pedestrians and vehicular, vehicular traffic at the intersection as well. So there's always a bunch of, uh, children that are walking from, um, Central School to that area as well, so there's, there's a lot of pedestrian activity, a lot of motorist activity that's happening in this area. Uh, the public feedback received was definitely in favor of removing additional parking spaces on the south side of Second Street. Um, they were, they, they've all noted that this wasn't an, an issue. Uh, the response received however, from the, uh, business owner was obviously that it was going to be, uh, an effect on her business, or the two businesses that are there. So they also, um, addressed the speed of the vehicles in which they're, um, the speed of which the vehicles are traveling along Second Street, so we, we will be in touch with OPP again, but that has come up numerous times since I've been dealing with parking, and we have raised it with them before. Uh, we have reviewed the area, and we did, we did, you know, it would be nice to be able to eliminate more parking along that south side, but because, again, we're dealing with a business owner that may directly, um, I guess, be affected by the fact that there's less parking to deal with, or to, for their customers, that we look at just maybe eliminating one for now, and then revisit the, the, the intersection and how it's functioning within a six-month period. And then at that point, if there's a need to take on further, or to take, reduce further parking, we can, uh, look at it then.
I agree, I drove through there this afternoon, and it's a terrible place to try and get around, um, I think there should, probably one or two spots would be even better.
Yeah, we've recommended two to begin with, for sure, but then, yeah.
Counselor Adams?
Um, I'm actually in favor of a stop sign, the other business owner that's in that area, who's renting, uh, space in the church, uh, they brought forward the, uh, stop sign idea, which I fully agree with. So in that neighborhood, you have three schools in that block, and then you have Central, and if a child is in with point five kilometers, they're supposed to walk. So you also have a lot of traffic flowing through with no stop signs, so you're not even providing safe access for the kids to cross the road. So I'm in favor of the stop sign, uh, that's where I stand on that one.
Counselor Owens?
I'm seconding what he's saying, I work in the area, and I see a lot of traffic going up and down that street from a classroom, and it, it goes really, really fast. And if you're there on Monday mornings, when the home hardware truck delivers, at one point, it's even more chaos when he's attempting to back into that, uh, newer yard to unload the truck. Like, they have to separate the tractor from the trailer, but before he gets that done, like, cars are trying to squeeze between there, and it's just chaos. I think a stop sign would probably go a long way in that intersection.
Can I ask, where, where are you proposing the stop sign to be?
On Second, Second Street, both sides, if you're coming east or west on.
Yeah, I think it was a three-way stop.
It's a, it would be a three-way stop.
So Station, it's Second and Station, on Second Street, heading.
And Station, so Second and Station Road.
Yeah, and then stop sign.
No, no, well, in my recommendation, well. There's one on Churchill already, but if you're going east on Second or west on Second, I think you should have to stop at Churchill. Like, I mean, yes, if you're coming down Churchill, or Station, you'd have to stop there and then stop again once you get on to Station, but it's a two-second stop. You can probably.
Here, I can pull it up if you want me to.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, it's not a big area.
It's, no, it's not big, but you can still stop, I mean, it's, because your traffic, if you're coming from Allen, you're going a long way without having to slow down.
Yeah, it's, Second Street's considered a thoroughfare, so it's, it's, I kind, I did do some research on this, because I figured that this was the next step, was to look at stop signs in this area. Um, we did, we've not looked at the design, uh, the issue between Churchill and Station being so small, there may be some challenges there from, in act, the meeting legislative requirements to be able to put a stop sign in, uh, on Churchill and Second, and Station and Second. So we'll have to look and play around with that area to see whether or not, um, from an engineering standpoint, what makes the best sense. It's not a bad idea, though.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I travel that street a lot, Second Street. Um, I, I can't speak in favor of putting a stop sign there. I think the way to correct that si- situation is to get the, uh, police to put a targeted, uh, enforcement on Second Street, to slow the drivers down and do it periodically. Um, personally, I, I don't think it's, it's very, I don't think it does much for traffic flow, uh, you gotta, when Station Road comes in there, uh, at, uh, so close to Churchill. The other thing is, Station Road in the wintertime is, it's a, that hill is, 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 uh, it's, it's very unsafe, and, uh, if you got a stop sign that close to Station Road, I can see more accidents happening, because there are cars that slide through there, and, uh, unless you're familiar with that street, I wouldn't put it up as driver's fault. Um, it's just a very slippery hill coming down there, and if you've got a lineup of cars stopped at the stop sign, I see more accidents happening. Um, but I, I can't see the effectiveness of only taking out one parking spot. Um, I'd forgotten about that intersection until I spoke with Ashley, and then I thought back to when I was working, and yeah, it, there's a real problem with vision there. Taking out, um, two parking spots there, I don't think is going to negatively impact the businesses that are in that, uh, immediate area. Um, but it certainly would make it a lot safer, especially for, uh, schoolchildren.
I kinda echo your concern coming off Station Road, because I slid through the, not very long ago, and I wasn't going very fast. Uh, I think a lot of people, those businesses, people do go down, uh, Churchill and park on the side, uh, section where the ballfield is. Do you want a further study on this?
That is up to you, um, at this point, the recommendation that's going to be the less financial of a burden is to remove parking. Uh, we can look at, um, we can bring back some recommendations from our Engineering and Public Works Department regarding putting stop signs there, if that's the direction council wants to go. It's.
Well, the fact that a couple of counselors have brought up the stop sign, uh, concerns, I, I think we need some further, uh, discussion, review. Counselor Owen?
Is there, uh, parking on Churchill as well?
Uh, yes.
Like Churchill right close to Second Street?
I believe the closest parking space is just by the church on the east side.
Okay, because I, uh, I rarely see cars parked over there. Um, so if you eliminated the two, two parking spots on, uh, on Second Street, there, there's existing parking that's not being used, it's just people are in the habit of parking on, on Second Street. We just take, you know, you take those two away, you're not really taking away two parking spots, 'cause there's parking spots just as close, or virtually as close, that aren't being used.
Ashley, are there one or two, uh, disabled parking spots there in front of them?
There's one.
Just the one, right?
Mm-hmm.
So does council agree we maybe to come back with, uh, further s- information? Counselor Adams?
Uh, yeah, I like to see, uh, further information, if we can talk to the schools, I'm pretty sure they'd have the numbers as to how many students have to walk instead of taking the bus, uh, and have, uh, provided what is currently provided by the municipality to help these kids cross the street, 'cause if there's nothing, that's not good. So I'd like to see, uh, further discussion on this.
Counselor Avanov?
I agree with Patrick, we should have further discussion on, I think the, uh, first step is to probably get rid of a couple of parking spots, at least one and maybe two, if Ashley suggests that, and then, uh, see what happens, and come back and talk about the stop signs later on.
I agree. Are we all in agreement with that?
I have a resolution that is moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Pa- uh, Patrick Adams. The council directs the Traffic and Parking Bylaw be amended to remove two parking spaces situated, uh, closest to the intersection on Second Street West of Churchill Drive, and further review, uh, the possibility of installing stop signs at either of the two intersections.
Is that satisfactory? All in favor?
All right, so the last item on the, in this report is to review our decision, our council's previous decision with Market Street. So in the summer of two thousand and eighteen, council voted in favor of turning Market Street into a one-way in order to accommodate requests from the owner of forty-eight Government Road West. The original request, and this is important to try and understand why council made the decision it did, uh, was to, uh, implement a larger loading zone on the east side of Market Street, uh, introduce a new loading zone on Water Lane, uh, introduce customer pickup areas on the eastern sidewalk of Market Street, and another one to the rear of the building on Water Lane. So I did attach the previous report, uh, for council's information to this, to this report. Uh, the original recommendation was for it to travel, oh my gosh, I have taken directions. It was supposed to travel towards Water Lane, so you would turn off of Government Road onto Water Lane, or onto Market Street, and hit Water Lane. That was the direction that was recommended by staff. Based on those recommendations and the conversation that did take place that night, uh, the change, they changed, the council changed the direction of the travel on Market Street to head north instead of heading, from north to south, so going from Water Lane on Market Street to Government Road. I'm not using east and west to north and south, I'm trying really hard. I said I was gonna print out a compass tonight, so I can make sure I have it right. Okay, so, um, that, the reasons they did that, so the, I, I rewatched the YouTube video as well, just to make sure that I, I caught it, it was, it was mostly, uh, it was one comment that was made by counselor, and it was to try not to direct traffic to the intersection of Government Road and Water Lane where there was the accident. So the idea was, okay, let's not push more traffic heading on Water Lane to that intersection. The other thing was preventing people from having to cut through A-one variety to access Government Road, which is funny, because now we're doing it the opposite direction. So the other, um, the other things that were discussed was the reduction of the setback of the loading zone on Water Lane, so it was mentioned in my report that on Water Lane, in order to accommodate a loading zone that would be long enough for a transport, um, it would need to go into that nine-meter setback that we normally put at intersections. And they went from nine to eight, because at that point, with the road going the opposite direction, you wouldn't have anybody on Market Street turning right or left, so you can allow for that visibility difference with the loading zone in the back. We also modified the definition of loading zones, um, within these bylaws, just to accommodate customer pickups. So originally, a loading zone was only for heavy vehicles or commercial vehicles to do deliveries, uh, we, we, our former bylaw enforcement would actually ticket people who were doing local pickups, so I know that there's a few times that, uh, people have gotten hit at Northern Bargains dropping off things, and they're parked in that loading zone right in front. They have been ticketed for that, uh, this bylaw actually el- eliminates the ticketing of customers trying to pick up, so in a loading zone, if there was a customer that was picking up for a certain period of time, they have that ability to do it. So, for you guys, if you want to rescind those bylaws, uh, there's a bit more than just alternating the dis- or the direction in which you wanna go. You need to look at the loading zone on Market Street, so if you want to accommodate, uh, the owner of forty-eight Government Road West and put a loading zone on Market Street, the design standards for Market Street are not wide enough, you need thirteen meters in order to accommodate two ways, you only have twelve. So for us to be legislatively okay, we need to make sure that, uh, it's, it's a one-way, so if the loading zone's there, we need to make it a one-way, and then decide which way we want that one-way to go. The loading zone on Market Street, or sorry, on Water Lane, if Market Street goes back to a two-way street, or reverses the one-way direction, we've eliminated, we've reduced the setback from eight to, from nine to eight, to accommodate the transport being there and not preventing access for the driveway that's beside it. And I can, I don't know if I have the aerial on here to show it up, it's probably easier to, to look at that.
That's the back of the.
Yeah, the back of the building, so there's a, a driveway entrance? That is, like, the neighboring property, yeah, so do you see the, the aerial shows it, where the loading zone is on the Water Lane, it's that hatched area, there's actually a driveway entrance that comes in right to forty-four, and it's, it's the cut, the curb is cut. So you don't wanna block that too much, because then you're gonna have your, the neighbors are gonna be concerned about that, right? So the loading zone right now in the back only accommodates the actual box of the truck, it doesn't include the front, so they're actually gonna have to pull up, move the truck to the parking lot on Water Lane and do their deliveries that way in order not to block access to the neighbor. So if you had to push that back to nine, you're encroaching.
Would, uh, Ashley, the applicant had stated that they, he would be willing to have the trailer, uh, at the back on, on, uh, Water Lane? But disconnect the, the truck and park it across the street?
Yeah, that's.
Would that still put us?
So the trailer itself at eight meters is fine, so the, but the truck itself has to move to Water Lane parking lot, has to disassemble and go off, just like home hardware does.
He was okay with that?
Yeah, so that's the way it's accommodated right now, but if you push that out a meter to get that visibility that you wanna see, that's a requirement within our parking bylaw, and you can flex it, it's, I mean, our bylaw is worded that it can be lesser than, but it's not recommended. Yeah, it's, it'll be up to council whether or not they wanna proceed. Yeah, it's, it'll be up to council whether or not they want to proceed that way. We did raise issues with visibility, but then devil's advocate says he's only going to be there for twenty minutes to an hour, maybe once or twice a week.
Counselor Avanoff?
That business, I don't, I don't think it's operating now and I don't, I don't see it operating in the near future. So you've got a parking zone or a loading zone for a business that's not operating. I noticed on Market Street too, and I drove by there today, that there's that, if you go the other way, there's that parquet that they've put in there that really nobody uses. And we've created this huge obstruction for visibility on Water Street. And it would be great for, I mean, I understand Lavie's Gyms would like some parking and that would be a great place to put some parking. I don't know what it would cost to, to change that around, but in my mind, it, I don't know if you're, I know you're trying to accommodate Albert Row with his, his business that used to be there. But we're, I don't think there's anything happening there at this, at the present time. I don't know if anything will be happening there.
He told me last week that his plans were still to go ahead with that if he could get a loading zone, not for transport, but for a small van. Now, originally, Kresge's did have a, there was a freight elevator that was right there. Mind you, we didn't have that other big obstruction on both sides of the road, but it's part of the problem. But I guess one of the questions I have too, Ashley, it seems to me that the interlocking brick that comes out on that side entrance where from the Kreski, old Kreski building is much wider than the normal standard sidewalk.
Yes, it is.
Is, is there a curb along that too? You can't tell because it's winter.
Yes, there's a curb there.
But is it possible to take, take back that sidewalk? His idea of loading or unloading from that side entrance was to park on the side, not to back up and over the sidewalk.
Yeah, the original request was the hatch dairy in blue. He wanted to be able to pull in and park that way. So.
To back in?
To back in was what he had suggested to us, yeah. That's, that was his original request.
He could live with the side parking. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I have a number of concerns with, with the changing of the, to a one-way. You're now asking people that are looking for a parking spot to make one, two, three, four left turns instead of four right turns. And because with a left turn, you're going through traffic, that makes it less safe than right turns. If we remove the parking on the far side of the south side of Government Road, then if you're looking for parking, you want to be going west on Government Road, turning right on the Market Street, turning right on Water Lane and then right on Prospect and around the block again. You're not going to be wanting to go the other way. In terms of a loading zone, I, I bought something that I couldn't get in Kirkland Lake in Timmins from a similar type store, stores what's proposed to be located there. And I purchased it in the store and then I drove across town to their warehouse and they loaded it into my truck. So there are other options as far as I'm concerned for the business owner. I don't think it's right to create a less safe downtown and inconvenience probably ninety percent of our residents based on something that could be, might be someday here, you know? I, I have no problem with rescinding the, the one-way bylaw and working with the business owner when he comes in with a signed contract saying that there's a business going in there. What the last council did, I didn't quite understand. I was at all the meetings. In fact, when they were passing it, I thought they were making it one-way going the other way, which is more livable than what's there now, so.
Guess what, Rick? I think some of the counselors, including myself, thought the same thing. It was total confusion at the end of the day. Personally, I favored going back to two-way, deal with the parking or loading zone separately. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, and there's one other thing. It seems every winter at least one truck gets stuck on that hill going in front of the Lavie's Gym. Now with it being one-way, the way it is now, your traffic's going to back right up to Prospect. There's no escape route. So that was another concern that wasn't brought up when this decision was made. It wasn't something I thought of sitting in the audience, but I've since thought about when I knew it was coming back. That's just not good planning and it's not good for the residents. Who wants to be stuck there in the middle of traffic? It's just not good planning.
Counselor Adams?
Yep. Ashley, is it possible to do two-way no parking? Is that within compliance?
Yep.
And the only downside would be the loading zone is more difficult if it were to happen. So the two-way no parking, that would allow the loading zone to happen on the right-hand side and then people can just?
Yep.
And especially if we're going to be eliminating parking spots, we should be allowing the easier flow of access to that, to that parking lot.
The owner of fifty government was not too keen on losing his parking.
Yep.
He was raising an issue with that. And I just want to, through him to you, I wanted to let you know that we did look at the costs of the parquet concrete stairs and how much it would cost to demolish. It's thirty-three thousand to do it internally and then forty percent more for a contractor. Okay?
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, well, my feeling on the, on the parking is I'd rather accommodate an operating business that's there and operating than accommodate a business that we're being told might come here someday. And so I would like to see the parking stay so that the customers at Lavie's have easy access. I, I would like to see perhaps considering putting in an accessible parking spot there because some of the clients at Lavie's are going there to maintain their mobility and for all intents and purposes, they're going there for a health service really. And the closest accessible parking spots are in front of the Royal Bank and then up by Dino's. That certainly for somebody with mobility problems is, is an issue. And it has been brought to me by a resident that that is an issue.
I think one of the, there was quite a few suggestions on social media about taking parking out totally. The problem on, on Water Street, the problem with that is there's six, seven apartments above Lavie's that they're working on. I don't think we can expect a senior or anybody to have to go down to the municipal parking lot, carry their groceries back to the building to unload. They'd have to make several trips. It's just total inconvenience. So I don't want to see that happen. I know I sure the heck wouldn't want to be living in that apartment building and have to haul my groceries from municipal parking lot. Counselor Adams?
Yep, so if we do a two-way with parking, if a business were to require a loading zone, they're forced to use the back at that point. Perfect.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, as for the apartments above Lavie's, the town entered into an agreement, and Wolf can correct me if I'm wrong, to provide, they were going to lease space in the Market Street parking lot. So if they're living there, they know that when they go in. And I believe they have some parking spots at the back as well. So I, it's not, like if somebody's living there, they know going in what they're going to have to do.
Wouldn't be my favorite spot.
Plus they have two flights of stairs to get up there.
What's that?
Plus they have those two flights of stairs to get up there. That's quite a climb for, for any senior. I don't think you have a lot of seniors living there unless you put an elevator in.
What's the actual?
Okay.
Before we beat, beat this to death?
Okay, I, I do have a resolution that staff bring back. They investigate, carry out public consultation and a public notice concerning traffic issues on Market Street and that options be forward for consideration prior to April thirtieth, twenty nineteen, which goes along with your motion. I also have a bylaw to repeal bylaw eighteen zero eight six, which is Market Street, turning it into the one-way. By repealing it, you're basically rescinding it and it goes exactly back to what it was previous to this. And that's, you, you have, you can do the two of them, which it just means that you're repealing Market Street right now, making it go back to what it was. And is there any possibility that within the next month or two, you're going to come back with further changes to the direction of Market Street? And that would be my only concern that we've discussed, that was discussed.
Well, personally, I would support repealing the bylaw and dealing with the parking separately. We need, we need further information or look at different opportunities there.
So the resolution then is, I have the one that's, that's moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council investigate, carry out public consultation and public notice concerning traffic issues on Market Street and that options be forward, be brought forward to council consideration prior to April thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Any discussion?
So.
We can do two of them?
You can do the two. You can do the two if you want. So this has nothing to do with, with changing direction. This is just look further into it. So the bylaw, which is also moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Owens, the bylaw nineteen dash zero one four being a bylaw to repeal bylaw eighteen dash zero eight six, which is the Market Street one-way, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed. So that just totally repeals it. It's like it never happened and it will go back exactly what it was. So if that's what you'd like to do, then I suggest you do that and then ask Ashley to come back with further considerations that will deal with everything else that you've spoken about today. Yes?
Are we okay with that?
Okay.
No. So you want us to vote first?
Yes, okay. So let's do the bylaw first. Let's get that one off the table. So it's moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The bylaw nineteen dash zero one four being a bylaw to repeal bylaw eighteen dash zero eight six, Market Street one-way be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
Turns it right back to what it was. Okay? So now we have a, a resolution that's moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, that staff investigate, carry out public consultation and public notice concerning traffic issues on Market Street and that options be brought forward for consideration prior to April thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Any discussion? Counselor Owens?
Do we have to go forward with that right now or can we wait until something comes up that dictates the need for it? Like if that business actually shows up with a, a plan or?
Yep, that's a, that's an option.
So can I rescind my, my second or just?
This just puts it on the table. You don't have to vote for it. So when you call for a vote, you just vote against it.
Counselor Owens?
I'm not a fortune teller, but I can pretty much predict that whether we want to or not, we'll be discussing this at a future council meeting. So I'm going to vote no against this because I'm sure it's coming back anyways. I don't, I don't foresee us, I don't foresee myself changing my mind on one-way, two-way, one-way this way or that way. No, 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 I'm confused. Two-way like it's always been, that's worked well for a hundred years. And we'll, we'll hear about it again at council, I'm sure.
That's what this bylaw does. First one?
It's two ways now.
How, where are you going to find more recommendations to bring forward? I, I feel like you've kind of beaten this horse to death.
I was thinking it, but I wasn't going to say it. Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, other, we did bring to council, it didn't come into a council setting. We did talk about the costs associated with demolishing the, the parquet. We, I, I don't know what else I can bring to you in terms of options for one-way versus two-way. I mean, those are them. So I'm not sure how to go past that. My only concern with repealing just one of the two bylaws is that I think one of them was for the loading zones and one's for the one-way. So now we're out of compliance. So you need to repeal both and then get rid of those loading zones and deal with it fresh. Yeah, you can't, you can't pass one-way and then now we're out of compliance if you leave those loading zones there.
So we're really, really rolling it back, aren't we?
You're going back to the original state. Yes.
And that's probably the best for.
So, so Monday morning, you're going to put green garbage bags over those signs? How's that?
I'll, I'll ask Dawn whether he's.
Yeah, okay, so Ashley's pointed out, we're not in compliance if we go two ways with the loading zone. So my question is, Joanne, can we repeal?
We're not doing the loading zone though, on this.
But I thought we already, I thought that the previous council voted for a loading zone and if we made it two ways, then we weren't in compliance. Okay, so my question is to Joanne. Can we rescind the loading zone bylaw today or do we have to give notice and rescind it at the next meeting? Or repeal, sorry?
It's going to come back with the traffic and parking bylaw. So what you're doing right now is you're basically, you're, you're passing a bylaw right now to say, let's repeal it as of tomorrow and goes back as it is. And Ashley will bring back the traffic and parking bylaw, which, which legally in our books repeals both the loading zone and the two-way traffic.
Okay, so we can only be in non-compliance for a short period of time then. I can live with that.
I think you can see why the last council got so tied up.
It wasn't just by north, south directions. I'm just saying.
Okay, and, and you do not have to vote on this, this resolution if, if the consensus is that nobody wants to bring this back. It never.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Like who's on first, what's on third?
I was going to say, watch YouTube for the last ten.
Counselor Adams? So you, under VA, no need to cover that at this point?
Yep, if you want to know how VA goes, just watch the last ten minutes on YouTube.
Thank you. Your motion to move or change the council meeting hours for discussion?
Yep, certainly, I know myself discussed it. It was one of the candidate's nights questions of how are we going to get more people to attend council meetings? And one of them was to not have the council meeting start before five o'clock. I certainly understand that. There is a lot of business owners and. I certainly understand that. There is a lot of business owners and workers out there who do work the 9:00 to 5:00, or finish at 5:00. I know Councillor Roman, on March 17th, 2015, they did try 6:30 for a three-month trial period, which did not see anything. But I'm certainly open to anywhere between 5:00 and 5:30, 5:15 is perfect, for council meetings to happen. That just gives that opportunity. And you see it all the time online of people being like, we can't attend council meetings because we work till 5:00, and they're already started. And this is just gonna shut down that conversation by at least either having council meetings start at 5:00, 5:30, or whatever the discussion would like to be on that. And even then, we can try for a trial period of one year. I learned today that Joanne does keep track of the attendance here. So, that is going to be able to be a real measurement as to the success of the program, rather than three months not being a true measurement as to time and attendance. So, I would like to see a discussion happen with the public as to what time they would think. But I'm open till, open to 5:00, 5:30, in between there.
Yeah, I think the 6:30 timing didn't make any difference. There was no change in attendance. As you can see, tonight, attendance is pretty decent. I can see the 5:00 issue, because that, with Councillor Roman, it was an issue. He was running to get here for 4:40 or 4:30. I could live with the 5:00. If we go beyond that, then we're asking staff probably to come back. And there are some nights where we're here till 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock. That's a long day. These people don't get paid overtime. They do get an option of some time off, but they have families as well. So, I would support a 5:00 change. That's my own opinion. Councillor Perry?
I agree with Mayor Pat that 5:00 would be, I'd be more than willing to try 5:00. I don't think I would like it much later than that because of the same issues he says, getting out of here too late, and having to bring people back. Thank you.
Councillor Owen?
Well, I think I can safely say I've attended more council meetings than anyone else in this room. And my experience shows that attendance at council wasn't driven by time, it was driven by issue. And when there was an issue that grabbed the public, they came to council. And when it was just mundane, day-to-day, housekeeping and operational things, attendance dropped down. And that's based on many years of sitting at the press table and watching. Now, I have no strong feelings one way or the other about changing the time. I agree that if we change it too late, we are putting a burden on the staff. And I know many staff, and I know it was true in my job too, you were given time off in lieu of, but you usually didn't get it, or you didn't take it. And so, I have no strong feelings one way or the other, but I don't think the time is the driver of attendance at council. I think it's the issues.
I've just been corrected. They don't get time off in lieu?
One person did. He hasn't come back.
Okay, I'm even more sympathetic to the staff now. If I was the boss, I'd give them time off in lieu.
Thanks, Rick. We'll include that in the budget. Does Councillor White?
So, we are definitely in a transition period as far as administration and council goes. I would support a trial period of a little later, just to see if public engagement does change. Yes, you can definitely see that it is subject-driven. I've been at council for quite a few years myself, and you know when it's budget time, it's gonna be packed. Any other time, there isn't. But we're hoping for better engagement with the public. I agree with Patrick, 5:00, 5:30, but I wouldn't go any later.
Thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I have a motion that council and staff bring back for consideration, options to change the time of council meeting. Now, changing the time of council meeting is actually, it's a new procedure bylaw. And this isn't something that you can do without giving proper notice to the public. The public has the chance to know. So, even if you were to vote today that you definitely wanted to do this trial period, we would, it would be, next meeting, we would give notice to the public that you're going to do it, and it wouldn't even happen until the following regular council meeting. So, you're going into March now is when it would possibly start. The other option that I just wanted to bring to your attention is that your procedure bylaw has to be redone. This is one of the things that we had planned on bringing back to you. If you would like, we could do a resolution to, to just amend the timing, or you could wait until the procedure bylaw is completely done. And it is, that right now is in the hands of Wishart Law during the finalizing of it. We will bring back a draft copy to you, of which there's an awful lot of things in that bylaw that you do have to make decisions in. It's not only the time, but there's other things also. So, that's an option also for you to consider. And we can bring that back if you'd like at the next meeting, and you can actually pass a resolution at that time. Give notice. Are you okay with that? So, I have a resolution that's moved by Councillor Casey Owens, seconded by Councillor Patrick Adams. The council and staff bring back consideration, for consideration, options to change the time of council meetings.
That could be March, too, as well?
It could, yeah.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Sorry, sorry, Joanne. Didn't mean to wake you up. Just kidding. Councillor Eugene Ivanoff, you were studying...
Contemplating. We still have a pigeon issue in Kirkland Lake. I drove down McCamus before I came to the meeting, and there is 300 pigeons sitting out there. There's food all over the place, thrown on the roof. I know that we have an issue with the bylaw enforcement officer, and that's probably one of the issues that, that, you know, he would be dealing with directly. I noticed the, that there were some options here. One was to eliminate the source of food. One was to repair and seal damage to exterior buildings where these pigeons are living and reproducing. And one was to create an unwarming environment with loud noises and their water sprays, which was... There's a fourth option, that's eradication, which may have to be something that we may have to look at if this continues in the present form. And I don't know if the guy on McCamus would like us to poison his pigeons, but it's getting ridiculous that somebody would be so foolish as to damage neighboring properties. And I'm sure he's only a tenant in that five-plex, not an owner of it. And he's just creating a huge issue for everybody in that area. And he's not the only one in town, but he's the one that you notice the most because he's got so many pigeons sitting there. I don't know what else we can suggest. I mean, the fine of $100 is a token fine. Perhaps maybe increasing the fine on an escalating basis, where the fine goes from 100 to 150 to 200 to 50, whatever repeated offenses. I'm not certain if any... I know we probably need a legal opinion on whether that would be enforced or enforceable. But there has to be something done that would at least control the blight of pigeons we presently have in our, in our community. I know they're not, it's not normal to have that many pigeons in any particular area. I understand the issue with the Park Lane building, and I don't think we have an illegal right. I know people have said, why don't we just close up all those windows? Well, I don't think we have that option as, as a council. That's something we may have to think about, or maybe ask the people that own the buildings to give us permission to do that. There's a cost associated with that, though, so it's not cheap. And there's other building, many other buildings in town that are, also have that same issue, where there's windows that are open, and pigeons are moving into those areas and, and living there, and reproducing, and creating this unhealthy environment in Kirkland Lake.
Councillor Ivanoff, I would ask Joanne to clarify that fine issue because we did originally set it at 2:50, and we were instructed, we had to, I'll let you...
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to bring the letter. It came from the Superior Court Justice. Because we do, when we do short-form wordings, we set the fine, and then we have to get their approval. The fine was originally set for $250. And the letter back from the court was that the whole point with short-form wording is just supposed to, just not be a hardship to, to the person that you write the ticket to. And they felt that the $250 was too, too high, and they would not approve it unless it was $100. Now, I do know that the police officers and the special constables will have the option to, to give multiple fines. So, it'd be 100, 100, 100. Then, they could also take that person to court. And you could go to court, and a judge can, can actually rule whether or not this is now, this is no longer just a municipal issue, but this is now, this is criminal, and it's a, you know... But they're, they have, they have rules that they can use, or fines that they can use. So, I think...
Yeah, I understand that you can charge him with mischief, I believe, is the criminal offense. And that can, you know, create a hard time. But it, I mean, this, this is getting ridiculous, where you can't speak to somebody about this without, you know, that him continuing to do things at 3:00 o'clock in the morning, or, you know, doing this thing on the QT and putting stuff on his patio, or in the backyard, or out in the laneway, or somewhere where somebody doesn't see him. And it's, it's a game of hide-and-seek right now, and, you know, it's just foolishness.
Councillor Owen?
There is another law that might pertain to this. And there was a case of this in the district in the last 10 years, and it was successfully prosecuted. It has to do with interfering with the enjoyment of your neighbor's property. In the case that was prosecuted, the person that was found guilty, he was restricted from going to his property for a period of time. That was part of the, the court decision. I don't know if it would apply to this. I'm not a legal expert, but I know there is an option there. It's not used very often in Ontario, but it has been used once in this district, quite close to Kirkland Lake, and was successful.
You would require the permission, well, the action would have to be taken by one of the neighbors?
Well, a neighbor would have to lay a complaint with the OPP. The OPP would have to investigate, gather the evidence, and then take it to the Crown. And then, the charges would, would be laid, or the Crown would say you don't have enough evidence, or it doesn't fit the... But it is an option that could be looked into. And I'm sure the neighbors there are, because they can lay a complaint without the person that they're complaining against knowing who was complained. It's not public knowledge.
To this point, they haven't come forward to, or they're not willing to do that?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the issues.
That's from the OPP.
Yeah, and then there is an intimidation factor. I mean, I myself thought about going there and taking pictures of him when he was doing it. And I almost did, and then I said, you know what? I don't wanna put my property at risk, so I understand the intimidation factor. But at the point of complaint, prior to going to court, he doesn't know who complained.
Councillor Owen, or Councillor White, sorry?
I think this issue is more than just one single individual. I think we should move away from discussing one single act or one single property. There has been quite a few suggestions via social media. One being, not that I necessarily agree with this, I see more issues than, than solutions in it, but establishing an area outside of town so that people who wish to feed the pigeons can do so. Of course, the obvious issue is cleanup, who's paying for it, whose property will it be? So, there, there are some significant issues with that, but it is one suggestion. Another one was the oval control. Thank you, Joanne, for, for putting it. It would not be a municipal-wide situation. The product is about $2.29 for every feeder, and then $235 for a 30-pound bag. So, again, we wouldn't be able, as a municipality, to put it on the roofs of these offending buildings. That would have to come from private citizens. It's an action that has to come from private citizen. There's only so much we can do as a municipality. And we really need the buy-in from the public to report when you see actions, and do what you can on your own property. I know that kind of feels like a cop-out as far as, like at the council goes, but we are working on it. Staff has been in contact with the health unit. We are working on it. We're working on, actually, I've been sending information out about vacant and derelict buildings, trying to get better wording and better registration on properties. We are working on it, but it does come at first from the public.
Councillor Owens?
Yeah, what I've read about this oval control has been mixed results in terms of how effective it is. But there are other options, too. Falconers could be brought in. I'm sure there's other communities that staff could contact that have had similar problems. I know many years ago in Aurelia, the problem wasn't pigeons, it was seagulls. And it took them, I'm gonna say, three to five years to deal with the problem, but they finally came up with a solution that works. Maybe the solution they came up with, seagulls, would also work with pigeons. I don't know. But I think, I think before we make any decision on what we, we should do, I, I think we need a report from staff looking into what other communities have done, what's been effective, what hasn't, and what are the options? Like, this, sorry, Dennis, yours is a, this is one option, and it may be the best option, but it may not be the best option. And I wanna clarify one thing about pigeons, too. The pigeons we're talking about are wild pigeons. There's a, there's a whole hobby about, that, with racing pigeons. And I happen, when I was a kid in Brampton, there were two, two of my neighbors that had racing pigeons, and they were amazing. They only landed on the rooftop of their coop, or whatever it's called. They never once landed on a neighbor's house. So, I just wanna make it clear that we're not condemning people that race pigeons or that raise pigeons for racing, because they are, anyone that I've known would be very responsible. They may be part of the problem, because I understand that the wild pigeons are racing pigeons that didn't make it home. But other than that, we're dealing with wild pigeons.
Councillor Adams?
Yep. A concern that was brought forward a couple times to me was the, the feeding bylaw being for people who like to feed the native birds out of their bird feeders and everything, they're afraid that they're gonna get a, a fine. So, I certainly understand the intentional feeding of pigeons is one thing. We're having your bird feeder and trying to enjoy your life and feed the native birds. So, how would we get clarification that these people who are just living their lives, happy feeding the native birds to the area, aren't gonna get fined?
If there's lots of pigeons, they're guilty. If there's no pigeons and just like blue jays, I would hope that our bylaw enforcement officer would wander off. You know, keep an eye out, but that's it. It's common sense, I would hope.
Councillor Owens? Councillor Owen?
And the pigeons would be predator to the smaller birds. So I know I have a bird feeder at my house, it's not full, but anyways, I like birds. But if there were pigeons in the area, I would stop feeding because the pigeons would prey on the, on the birds that I actually want to see. Once you stop feeding, then they're going, they're, they're going to go find a source of food elsewhere.
I have a resolution. It is moved by Councillor Casey Owens, seconded by Councillor Pat Adams. The council directs the CAO to bring back solutions for consideration for reducing the pigeon population within town.
All in favor? Unanimous. Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws? Oh, that's done, sorry. The questions and answer to council from staff?
If I recall directly, this was a, we didn't have other recent questions to council. There were some for pigeons, but that came back as a discussion. And so it was primarily just this one. And this was a follow-up from a previous report that wasn't as complete as it should have been. The staff put together the references that governed the traffic control planning, but did not provide adequate documentation as to their own. So that was brought back and was put together last week. It's fairly comprehensive. It gives you both the policies, SOGs, as well as the forms that are filled out and the training protocol that is followed. There's two references in from 2013 where MOL showed up. And they're basically minor adjustments that were done on the spot. I'm not sure what more to say to it because it is 54 pages. So I think it's easier to leave it with the council. We do have another question, sorry. We do have another question that came in late, and that is to deal with the accidents that occurred. And that will be in the next report to council.
Any comments, discussion? Yep. Councillor Adams?
Yeah, I'm very satisfied with the traffic control plan that we have in place. It shows proof that we do have one and that it is being discussed with the workers, which is very important, especially with the amount of incidents that have been happening. If we do a risk assessment on probability of a vehicle going over our snowbanks, we're into the high category. So for us to not have a conversation, because if the Ministry of Labor were to come in, the first thing they're asking for would be for our traffic control plan and to make sure that everyone is doing it. So under duties of council, we're only making sure that we do have our proper procedures and policies in place, and I'm more than satisfied with what's been provided.
Thank you.
And we do refer back and forth to the OPP and MOL when we're preparing and doing the documentation, so.
Notice of motions? None declared? Confirmation by law?
It's moved by Councillor Casey Owens, seconded by Councillor Pat Adams. That bylaw 19-015, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February 5, 2019, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Councillors' reports? Councillor Ivanoff?
I did attend the, I did attend the Heritage North, the Aging Well in Kirkland Lake afternoon meeting. There was about 20 people there. It was, the information handed out was really good. This, this actual book, booklet is very, very good. For anybody who hasn't seen it, it's a, it's a real good booklet to read, lots of phone numbers. The only issue that was brought up at that particular meeting was the fact that it wasn't bilingual. And that was a concern by somebody who was a French-speaking descent and wanted it in French. And I knew it would cost more money, and that was the response that they got. So if there is any more funding, they would like to have this booklet in French.
Good point. Thank you.
We would also welcome partnership with Richlu or any of the francophone associations in Kirkland Lake that could help us perhaps with this. We won't get more funding for it. And so to make it both relevant and tailored to the francophone community, if we could get, anybody would be interested coming forward to helping us out with that, we'd, we'd welcome that.
Councillor Owen?
Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Timas Municipal Association meeting with Councillor Perry. And one of the things that came out of that meeting was the proposal for sharing resource revenue within municipalities in Northern Ontario. And the president of Phenom, yeah, was sitting next to me, and he said, he mentioned that he had discussions the weekend before at Roma with a few ministers, saying that it is on the conversation. They are talking about it. It's something is coming down the pipeline. And what he was suggesting is that municipalities have some type of action plan in place that they would be able to identify where these funds would come handy and to forward these to Phenom so that they can have this information with them when they meet with different ministers.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Yes, I too attended the Aging Well in Kirkland Lake. I saw Eugene on the other side, but he didn't speak to me. I don't know. I guess that's politics, but anyways, I was made aware of a very, what I consider a very pressing issue, and it's something I hadn't thought of. I was talking to a senior, and this is her first year not driving in the wintertime. Now, this, this particular senior has volunteered for many, many years with a local organization. And she had to stop that this year because it costs round trip $25 to go and give her time to help others. They also mentioned how it makes the winter long and lonely when they can't afford to take cabs here, there to their normal social events. And, you know, it, it is a real issue, and I think it's one that needs to be addressed. The Royal Canadian, Branch 87 of the Royal Canadian Legion, I think, came up with an excellent plan for their members in which the members pay a certain amount, a nominal fee, and the rest of the bill goes to the legion, and they pay it. And now, my understanding is that's for legion members, and it's for legion members going to the legion or to a healthcare facility. I'm not sure whether it covers social events. And I know we don't have the money to put a similar program in place. But I got thinking about it, and this is a social service. And I think this is something that our representatives to DSAB could take to DSAB, which I also know has very large reserve funds. Now, the difference between here and, say, New Liskert is New Liskert has a bus service. We don't. But I think it's something, as a councillor, that really, it hit home with me. We have a lot of seniors that could be a lot healthier if somehow something could be done to help them to get to, to, to special events like concerts and, and get out of the house. As the senior said to me, you can't always count on family and friends. Those people have their lives, too. So I'm just wondering if, if perhaps this could be brought up with DSAB for a discussion and see if something outside the box could be done to help these people. It wouldn't cost a lot of money, but I can't see that we have funds to do it. So I just wanted to bring that up.
We can bring that up at a DSAB meeting? It's budget time right now. Any further reports? Councillor Perry?
I attended a shortened 100th anniversary committee, meeting on Thursday because I had to go to Earlton. And just wanted to say that everything is taking shape. They're starting to add up with all their events. And I think Kirkland's in for, for a real good time this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Adjournment?
It's moved by Councillor Casey Owens, seconded by Councillor Adams. The council adjourned this record in January...
We did that.
...February 5, 2019, in a camera meeting to discuss pursuit of section 239 to the municipal act. Two items concerning personal matters and five...
All in favor?